The meeting will come to order again as we are going around to the council members, giving them the opportunity to make amendments. We have completed with Councilmember Emerson, so we go to Councilwoman DeLisla.
Thank you, Mayor Wilgass. The only amendment, like I mentioned earlier this evening, that I would like to make, this would be my third amendment that I mentioned, would be the downtown incentive grant. I think that when you take a look at the amount, like for example, tonight we just approved a project that's going to be downtown, that's going to qualify for those funds. And it's going to allow for us to have housing units that are going to be not only paying additional taxes to our community, but they're also going to have people that are going to be living there that are going to be spending more sales tax. So I know that we, I'm not proposing that we refill it up. That fund used to have $300,000 in it, but I think that after doing some evaluation, we're kind of expecting that there's going to be a request this year for a total of $200,000. So my proposal tonight is to add an additional $50,000, still leaving $100,000 short from where that was last year, to the downtown revitalization fund.
Okay, so it's in the budget currently at 150, and you're proposing then the additional $50,000, which would bring it to 200,000.
Yes, sir.
Downtown Topeka facade program. Is there a second? Councilwoman Hiller, seconds.
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion.
The only thing I would say other than that is that there was a fair amount of discussion before, and I would hope, I don't know that it's got to be part of the motion, but I do think a review even this fall of the language there, so that people have more certainty about whether, you know, they can get another grant on the same building after time or anything like that. I think it'd be good for us to review it. I think there'll be consensus though, and I'm not worried about that. I support adding.
And I know part of that is DTI sets the parameters, but we do sign off on those now.
Yeah, I think it's our program. We've kind of let them do it, but there were enough questions when things came through this time that I think it won't hurt.
Right, good, okay. Councilwoman Claire.
So I guess I need to understand the process. So if we vote approval for that, when does this come up that we could have a say in the details? I mean, that would be a deal breaker for me on voting the yea or nay, knowing we have input on the details.
Well, of course, this, wait a minute. So this is the 2018 budget, so there is that aspect of, before these funds would be expended. Can you speak to that, Mr. Interesting.
I can, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman, the council's role in this process is to set the boundaries of the district of the BID. The contract itself between the city and the BID is an administrative process done through the city manager's office, as is typical with our contracts. So if there were certain things that the body wanted to specifically ask for in that contract, we could certainly make that a discussion point, but the contract does run through the manager's office.
Okay, all right. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. So if this passed, that's $50,000 and $20,000 that we already added, so would you be able to find $70,000 in the budget? I mean, I was looking at the smaller amounts, but now this is getting bigger, so can we find that in the budget or not?
Councilwoman Schwartz, I'll give you, I'll sound like a broken record, but I'm confident that Nick, Nikki, and staff will be able to locate those funds, yes.
Well, I might follow that up. With downtown booming, and I, after the paper this last Sunday, I had a call from my neighbor, or an email from my neighbor, said, "Please save the paper for me because I know there's a lot going on and I want to read it." I was a little disappointed, and I've talked to Vince about this, as to where some of those grants went to, and I think some of my concerns have been addressed. I think we do need to get downtown vibrant with people living there, and so I'm not so, you know, adamantly opposed to the lofts and the, you know, the fronts, the buildings, and that type of thing. So I will support this.
Okay. Other questions? Discussion? We have before us a motion to add $50,000 for the downtown Topeka. The second was Commissioner, Councilwoman Hiller. Or Commissioner.
I answered that.
Commissioner. Any other discussion? Councilwoman Emerson.
Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask a question, because another big downtown thing that we have cut funding for is T-PAC. Is that correct? And I'm sorry, I don't have that right here in front of me, but.
Yeah. It was reduced.
I'll give you actually a technical answer. In the budget, year to year, T-PAC is actually seeing an increase. In the 2017 budget, their number was 94. In the 2018 budget, the number's 150. Now, of course, there was a process at the beginning of this year that added to that 94, but budget to budget, it's actually an increase.
And to follow that up, but they, I guess it's been kind of determined through their reports they've sent us and through their analysis, that right now they're running a deficit of about $300,000 a year. Is that correct? Okay. And we're looking at not giving them $300,000 next year.
Councilman, our recommendation is, of course, they got, ended up getting, practically speaking, $300,000 this year. Recommended 150 for next year. The rationale, it's not anything against T-PAC, the rationale is just that that gives a year and a half, or needed changes to happen for additional fundraising, for a more robust program, and that was our rationale for that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
We have, the motion before us is for downtown Topeka facade program, adding an additional $50,000. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote yes.
We have five yes. Claire, Emerson, and Cohen voting no, and Councilmember Jensen abstained.
It requires six votes to pass, so the amendment did not pass. Councilwoman DeLisla, do you have anything else?
I don't.
Okay. Councilwoman Jensen.
None at this time.
Councilwoman Schwartz, Councilwoman Deputy Mayor Cohen. Anyone where the line item we're on, consideration of amendments. Any other amendments anyone wants to make, discuss or discuss? Councilwoman Hiller?
I'm not, I want to respond to Councilwoman Emerson's comments, just to fill in a little background, because when T-PAC first started, I think if people look back, $300,000 a year was the subsidy. In time, that crept up a little bit, and then it dropped to the 94 level, which fairly clearly, people could argue why exactly, but it appeared not to be enough. So if we want to wait until we get their second quarter report and consider that before the very end, I'm open to that. If $300,000 is the sweet spot, I don't want us to cut the legs out from under them just when they're getting on their feet. They have indicated, I think, to all of us, that if, similar to the downtown proposal, if it was another $50,000, they would do everything they could to make that 200,000 If people aren't ready to consider that, then we'll just watch how things go.
Okay, all right. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to propose that we add a full-time staff at the fire admin building. We do have one on medical leave, and we have maybe a couple on the medical leave, I don't know, but, you know, and talking to staff and being down there myself, the fire chief, he needs to really focus on his duties and not be out there answering the phone at lunchtime or during the process. So this is a much-needed position, and I hope my colleagues would support it. With that, I'll make a motion.
Would you want to give us an amount for budgetary purposes? I'm sorry, is there a second? Is there a second? Councilwoman Claire, seconds.
Mr. Mayor, I left out the amount because I don't know what, if it would be an office one, office two.
I'm thinking we can get an approximation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's what we were just talking about. I've been talking back and forth with Jackie Russell and Nikki, and we think $50,000 is a good baseline for that position. I will say that this was requested in last year's budget and did not make it past the personnel review committee hurdle. And a councilwoman did talk to me about that, and I think there are maybe some other ways to address it, but it's difficult to discuss some of those in open session, I would say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second before us to add a, I'll say it's a position in the fire department. I won't go into specifically why it is, with an approximate cost of $50,000.
Does that include benefits?
Councilwoman Claire.
So if we, again, I need the procedure here. So if we vote, if we approve this, it could still not be added or not come to fruition because it doesn't pass some?
No.
No?
Councilwoman, if you vote affirmatively on this motion, it would become part of the budget and part of?
It would happen.
It would happen, yes.
Okay, right. Okay. Other discussion? Miss Councilwoman Ortiz.
I want to make sure that my motion, because that my motion is that it's for a clerical position at the admin building. Is that what you have, Doug?
Okay.
Because I want to make sure that that's the position.
Thank you, because I didn't say it that specifically.
Right, right.
Clerical position in the administration building. Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Ortiz, I know you know a lot more about the fire department than I do. Yes, ma'am, you do.
Thank you, Anderson. Inspector Ford.
The only, I hadn't, just had not heard of this before, so it's, it's just hitting me, I guess, out of the blue. Is there, is there any way to demonstrate what the need is, or?
May I respond?
Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The need is for clerical duties, so that our fire chiefs and our battalion chiefs are not out there answering the phone and helping our customers that come in there to get, to get their permits, et cetera, et cetera. We need somebody there, and then also some of the firefighters that are on desk duty, they come over and help. Our chief is more valuable being our chief and figuring out what needs to be done than to be sitting there answering the phone. And this has been a much-needed position for the last several budgets, Doug, to be real. I have talked to Doug about it. There's some things that we cannot discuss, but I'd be happy to discuss with you, but I would hope that I would get your support. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I really have trouble supporting this if it can't pass the personnel review policy. I mean, that's in place so that we don't just add and add and add. I would agree with Mr. Emerson that you are more in line with what the fire department needs in some areas than I am, but, you know, we have a process in place so that we don't just add people where they're not necessary, so I don't know, Doug. I need some more information on this before I can make a decision. I don't know if we need to defer this for two weeks so that that can be provided, maybe in a closed session. I don't know that we're ready to vote on this at this point, quite frankly. I mean, I'm happy to pass the budgetary authorization for it, but I would absolutely not be comfortable authorizing you to hire someone until we're absolutely confident that we need that person. And not passing a budgetary, a staff review, just really scares me.
Councilman, I don't want to not answer your question, I just am reluctant to talk about specific personnel issues.
Sure, agreed.
In this setting.
I agree.
I will say, we have added a temp to help try to address that situation that's taking place over there. Actually, honestly, Jackie and I were just texting back and forth about if there are other potential options, but at this point, we're not sure that we would, you know, Jackie, myself, Nikki, we sat on the personnel review committee, and we just didn't see the need to be very direct about it.
So this is, and I think it's a, it's like, Councilwoman Schwartz moved previous year to add a position for grant writing. I mean, it's, we're at that point. I mean, we can do it tonight if we wish, or we don't. I mean, it's a, really an up or down tonight.
I just wanted to say, it's very clear that this, there's more to it, and that this is much more of an HR personnel issue than a budget issue, and I am not comfortable entering into that arena, so I will not support it for that reason.
Councilwoman Jensen.
So I would, if I could make a friendly amendment, I would be happy to support the budgetary authorization, pending a further review of whether or not staff actually thinks they need that, but if passing this automatically directs staff to hire, then I'm not comfortable with that. So I don't know, Mr. Robinson, if you could help us with the legalese there. I'm happy to put a placeholder in there now, pending further discussion, but I would certainly want the further discussion to happen.
I think that's challenging to do tonight, is that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Councilman, I think maybe one of the answers is it's not particularly a legal, I mean, I know what you're trying to get at, but there's not particularly a legal issue associated with it. If it would be helpful, we could, at some point, have a discussion about this, so the council was aware of what the issues are, and then that might help. Yeah?
Yeah.
Further explain our position.
So maybe this could be one of those issues we bring up, but we don't like to go into things after tonight, but if there is that need. Okay, well, we have a motion before us, $50,000 to hire this particular position in the administrative office of the fire department. Okay. Councilwoman Claire.
Sorry. If we, if we say, if it doesn't, if it's not approved, and we find out in six months that this position is needed, can you then hire? I mean, if, or does it have to be in the budget, or six months from now you can say, oh, yes, we can do that?
The city manager has.
I'm trying to think of a way to answer that. The city manager does have the authority to hire and fire through his department heads, her department heads. So the technical answer is yes, but there would have to be budget flexibility. So if the budget flexibility weren't there, then the answer would be no.
Money has to be there. No. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Doug, you talked about a temp. Is it, is it for the summer? I know me and you talked about putting one of the kids over there. Is that one of the youth that's over there? Who's over there?
I might ask Scott Jackie Russell to come up and share those details.
There is a temporary clerical professional person over there that's been there for a couple of months through a staffing agency.
Okay.
They also do have a TW, TW youth employee working with the department. I think that it's floating between the admin and inspections area, so they have that resource for the summer only, but the temp is not a definite term.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion, a motion and a second, to add $50,000 to the budget for the staff position, clerical staff position in the fire department. Another discussion? Please vote, yes, no.
We have seven no.
Seven haven't voted no. The amendment is defeated. Are there other amendments in the group? We do have a person for public comment on this line item. Let's play it better. And it's always an issue whether you have someone, public comments, before the amendments or after the amendments, and you went after the amendments tonight, so it's that per view.
Sorry, mesmerized, we had a discussion. Thank you. Well, since I'm the only member of the public, I may ask for a little extra time, but I'll probably cut out of here on public comment. I'll give you a break if you'll indulge me. Last week, I gave out a document showing schedule on design contracts that I don't believe have been looked at as adequately as I certainly would have if I'd been in a position of authority, and I'm going to pass that out again. And it shows paying engineers over on, well, it's actually $210 an hour, and other large numbers, more than we pay often attorneys in this town to do design work on California Street. With that, I raised two contracts that I came across, and this is probably just a many, if we actually started looking at them. These were on California. I'd like everybody to be able to see that. The original contract called for $200,000 went up to $300,000, design work on a small part of that work, California. Then another one went from $200,000 to $409,000 for a small period of time. And what I'm showing you is, while we're arguing about how to cut social services to keep America beautiful, which I would have supported, keeping them, that is, we tend to not see the forest for the trees a lot of times. I mean, I'm going like, what am I missing here? I'm watching you guys, and we're talking about very small amounts of money, and it's important. I know the devil's in the details. That's how you get to a $300 million budget. But I am very concerned, since I started looking at the way we're paying for streets, and we've had almost a 10-year program of sales tax, and I'm hearing a lot of people saying, what did we get for that 10 years? And I'm here, over the weekend, I had a CLE with some attorneys in town, and that's how you get to spend a Saturday when you're an attorney sometimes, but one of them been the legislator, and he said, you know, the thing I hear from legislators here about Topeka is, why can't we fix our streets? And they're coming from communities that fix their streets. One of the problems that I sent you additionally isn't just about streets, it's about code enforcement. I sent you pictures of South Topeka the other day. This is recent pictures of just the most horrible building, that, you know, broken glass, not boarded up, and it's been that way for weeks. And so I'm hearing from people, talk to race track people, wow, this is Topeka, and they're just shocked at how bad the south part of the city looks. And I'm going, this is your capital city. You know, what are we going to do in this budget to fix the problems? And then I talked to two different county people, people with some amount of authority about 21st Street, and I said, okay, you have a part of that that you did under this sales tax, this last sales tax, and the city had part. And they told me that the city's part, same amount of footage, concrete, same grade, costs us 37% more than what the county paid. So the concerns I've got is not just management, not just department heads, not just council, but that the citizens don't feel like they're getting the big bang for the buck that we should be getting for all this money we're paying on streets. And so I'm kind of that guy that says, whoa, whoa, before you add another dollar, I want to know what you're doing with what I already gave you. I mean, I'm going to ask for more time, and I do want to get this finished, because I know you're all.
How many, how much more time would you like?
If you give me four, I think I can wrap everything up, and I will cut out a public comment. That's my guarantee.
All right. Move to four minutes.
That's called negotiation.
Seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
We have nine yes.
Okay, please continue for four minutes.
Thank you. So I was talking to a, these are pretty high people that I like to talk to, I like to get their intake, input. They said, you go to these multi-year contracts on the same streets, and they're budget killers. They're absolutely killing your budgets with the city. They are budget killers. When you take a street like California, and last year did a block and a half, when it was my theory, they should have just done from 37th all the way to 29th in one year. Of course, you've got to allocate utilities. I understand, I'm talking about the actual construction should be done in one year. And that's busted up into three or four years. Your costs start really escalating. These are from experts. They tell me this. They say, we want to know how much of the money that's going to these private individuals, these contractors for design, could have been done out of your 1.8 million that you have of engineers already on staff. Are they actually doing some of the contract, the construction management purposes with their engineering technicians that our people should be doing? These are, these are questions that your management, your department heads, need to be asking the tough questions about, okay? And the reason I got on this was because I was shocked at how long California was taking and all the arguments we're having about how many lanes. Well, then I'm finding the county seems to be able to produce these big, grand, five-lane highways, under budget and on time, and I'm finding out that they enforce the penalties. They give you a date certain, you better have it done, that there's, a lot of times the design contractors are designing at a flat rate, so they're not doing this billable hour. And so I'm going, you know, if it's good enough for the county, it can be good enough for the city. We're all taxpayers, we're all paying the same taxes here, except in the city, we pay a little more. So when we have lost 1,500 people, that's part of your budget problem. We've lost 1,500 taxpayers in the last five years, and I don't know that we're doing anything about that, that we're addressing that. But when we are in that kind of a mode, this is, this is the time to get under the hood and find out why we don't have maximum horsepower from our staff or our contractors, and why they're not finishing jobs on time, and why we're not getting jobs done in one year instead of multiple years. Another thing that I'm very concerned about is the way we fix the potholes, something as basic as that. So I got ahold of somebody pretty high up on the county side, and I said, how do you fix a pothole? And they said, well, here's what we do, because our goal is not to be called back on that pothole. We don't want to call back on it, because that's a productivity killer, and it's a budget killer. So what they do, they take compressed air, blow out all the dirt, then they have an oil that they put in with the mix of the new product that helps the molecules bond to the old product. Then they compress it, they flatten it down, they make sure that it's got serious weight applied to it, so it's actually fixed. And their callback rate is very, very low. I can probably find that out for you, but they do not get callbacks. They don't want a callback for at least a year on a pothole. I've seen potholes that break apart within three days or three weeks in the city, all over, not just some. And these problems have got to be fixed. So I'm thinking, you know, maybe we've got some innovative contractors, we can just privatize this. We'll just, we don't need all this staff during the winter when they're not having to work much, and just privatize it, and let Beddits or some of these smaller contractors bid on privatizing the repairs of our streets for the pothole repairs. Okay, thank you. I said I'd go away at the end. I appreciate the extra time.
Thank you. That completes the discussion on, or action on item D, action item D. And again, just to clarify, in, by July 11th, we will receive a budget with these amendments, et cetera. Though with item six announcements, we have no council meeting for two weeks, so there is no agenda.
July 26.
We do have.
A special meeting on the 26th.
All right, thank you. We have an additional, a special meeting, that's correct.
Yes, Monday on the 26th.
We, I'm sorry, will you read?
You bet. Monday on June 26th at 6 o'clock in the council chambers, we will have a special meeting that will consist of a public hearing and an ordinance establishing the week.
meeting that will consist of a public hearing and an ordinance establishing the Wheatfield redevelopment Tiff district located at 29th and Fairland.
All right. So you are here?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, Monday night. Is, is there a question? Yes, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm going to be out of town in Colorado with my church on Monday of next week. Is that something where you need a certain, is that where you need a certain number of votes?
No, it would be...
Or a simple majority?
Six.
Normally, we need six, and that would be, yeah.
I'll be sick, I think.
Thank you.
For all of our, for all of our votes, we have a minimum of six, unless we have to have an additional.
Yes, I didn't know, that's a, I thought there was something maybe special about that particular meeting. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. This was in regard to the special meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, and this is now, the public hearing is coming around.
Yeah, I think it's like phase two, and so it, reasonably short meeting, we assume.
Yes, we're hopeful.
Yes, we were hopeful, short meeting, no other items, the only item on the agenda...
We'll have to show up so that it is a meeting.
Yeah, we have to be here, have to have six of us here, so we have a meeting. All right. Any other questions on that item? Okay, then we have announcements.
6 o'clock here.
6 o'clock in this room. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is that a business casual meeting?
Fine with me.
Excellent.
Business casual. All right, to the city manager for announcements.
Mr. Mayor, I'll have four or three event announcements, and then one more thing. So very briefly, there's a ribbon cutting Thursday at 1 o'clock to dedicate the newest extension of the Shunga Trail, and that ribbon cutting will be held along the trail just west of Fairland, across from Crestview Park. So hope to see you all there. Then there's a construction project meeting that's upcoming also in the next week on June 22nd, and that's for Northwest Tyler Street between 24 and Lyman Road, and that will be held at the Seaman Community Church from 4:30 to 6:00. Then if you follow us on social media, or we're downtown today, you saw that we got the Sheroes painted on the Kansas Avenue between 6th and 10th. That's going to be a nice addition, and should certainly complement the signs that we have up on the avenue also regarding the walk your wheels ordinance that the council adopted. And then finally, just a friendly reminder, hope to see you all Thursday, this Thursday evening again. It's a busy night for the citywide picnic that begins at 5:30 at the Topeka Zoo. Thank you.
And just, Council, I want to acknowledge the budget process. I'm proud of how well we've handled it, gone through it for the last whatever series of meetings and weeks, it seems like months, years, but comes together, and I think it was a good meeting, productive meeting tonight, and I also compliment the staff for doing all their appropriate work so that makes it easier for us. And we go to Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. And it's not even 9 o'clock.
I know.
The budget, the budget meetings in the past have been to midnight, so...
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock in the morning, so that's great. I do want to encourage people to come out to the Shunga Trail, which now is going to go into District 7 on Thursday, so, and my gem of the week is Coach Ballard. Brett Ballard is our new coach at Washburn, and he's doing basketball camps this week, and he's just, he's a great guy, so Washburn and all the staff out there, their team, they introduced all the teams, so that's the gem this week.
Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to announce this when they opened, but Casey's is now open in District 8, so now we have Pizza by the Slice out there on the west side of town, and there's, they're very, very happy.
Very good.
It's at 21st and Yerish.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller.
Pizza by the Slice is awesome. I wanted to, I appreciate, we're even holding the MTPO meeting a little late so that everybody can go to the Shunga Trail opening. We have waited for seven years for that. It is huge, so that's really exciting. On my list, I wanted to give kudos to the city administrative staff. All of us on the council got copied in on an internal survey, kind of a workplace satisfaction and suggestion survey, that was pretty detailed about all of our internal departments, and I thought it was excellent, so I wanted to congratulate you for doing it and for the quality of it. I hope you get a good response. And I also wanted to give kudos to the Capital Journal. Someone mentioned a little earlier this, the 56-page supplement that was in this weekend. What a keepsake for everyone involved in downtown, or of course, whose picture was in there, but they followed that with the, the big front page article, or maybe that was on Sunday of Top Tank, which is the investors who are putting up $100,000 for people to start a business in Topeka, and also then a feature on the break room and the potential plans. It's just been coming and coming, but that one was just huge, and just a shout out to the Capital Journal's staff and management on that, because I think that that is an example, but the positive support that, that the city has had from the paper recently, and the press overall, really, on, on things, everything from when they were an idea to when they're happening is, has really made a difference for all of us, I think. Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire.
Want to remind you or tell you about the Art and Antique Fair in Noto, Saturday, 10 to 6. Be there.
Okay, streets are shut off, going to be a major, major event.
Major event.
Councilwoman Ortiz. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few weeks ago at a budget presentation, Jason Peak mentioned that they'd done a microservicing demonstration, I believe over on 19th Street, is that? And I was interested in seeing that, so I went over there, and I would just really suggest to everyone, anybody that's interested in that, go by and look, it is fantastic. And if you need any more places, California from 37th to 45th would be an excellent place to try out a mile of that, so, thank you. It's a really neat process, I think everybody should go check it out.
Will we be able to tell what it is?
Oh, yeah.
You're a street guy.
It's, it's all of a sudden, it's just a really smooth street. I mean, it's, well, you'll see. You'll see the difference. There's a contrast.
Councilwoman Delisa. Councilman Jensen.
Well, the downside of going last for announcements is everyone's already stolen all the good ideas. A lot of great things are happening in our town. I was part of that article they wrote on Sunday for the downtown stuff, and that was quite the privilege to be in there. And I want to thank the Capital Journal for just going after the positive things in our community and really highlighting the great things that are happening here. You know, I wasn't part of the city manager search when we hired Jim Colson, but we had a struggle to get candidates for that, and now we've got tons of really, really excellent people that are replying for this position. And I think that's a testament to all the work that everyone in our community has put toward making Topeka the place that we all know and love, and we all know it truly is at heart. And I just think that this is just evidence of all the positive things that are happening, and it's a wonderful time to be at Topeka. Have a great week, everybody.
Very good. Good, good way to end. Public comment, I believe Mr. Ledbetter has left us. There is, there is no executive session, so being no further business before the body, we are adjourned.
Doug, they cleaned up some of the tracks.
Cleaned together. I could not have anticipated.